Started, welcome everyone. And we'll take a roll call.
Coming up from athletic.
So we have a whole house today. Wonderful. We all received copies of our meeting minutes that were dated for September 5th. Are there any changes that need to be made before I ask for a motion to approve? Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So move out.
Great, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Adjustments to the agenda?
We have no this evening.
Okay. And do we have anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Invite you up in the introductions. For board chair report, I do want to welcome Sarah Gass, our new student representative. Sarah, would you like to introduce yourself to the board? Your, where you're from, your, your grade, what you're involved in for co-curricular activities at the beginning.
Hi everyone, my name's Sarah and I'm a junior. This is my first board meeting that I've attended as part of the board, but I have seen a few meetings in action. I enjoy participating in the drama club at school, tennis, key club, ASV mentoring, and I'm really glad to be here, so, thank you.
We're very happy to have you, Sarah. If you have any questions, Lucas is a great resource, but also don't hesitate to reach out to any members of the board as well. I also wanted to take this opportunity to share with you all that this is Wally's last meeting with us. His term is ending, and so I wanted to, on behalf of the board, truly thank Wally for his tenure with us. He is by far one of the most active board members we've ever had. He played a key role in establishing or actually reinvigorating our substance abuse prevention team, which then became part of our wellness committee mission and has stayed engaged throughout that whole process. Not to mention all the other ad hoc committees he volunteered to participate on, played a key role in redeveloping our superintendent evaluation process, which is going to be a very important tool as we onboard the superintendent. And Wally, as vice chair, was my confidant at all hours of the night. We would text and he would provide me with some advice and I really relied on him heavily. So thank you so much, Wally, for your volunteerism.
Okay, we have under nominations this evening. If you reference your agenda notes, first one's special education teacher here at Hand Academy is Leanne Dunham. You can see Leanne's experience and tenure. Her salary is, I'll also note that these salaries are the current contract that hopefully will change within two hours, so they'll be adjusted. So the salary based on that is $38,432. I'd ask for your endorsement, Leanne Dunham.
Second. Great, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, Leanne, congratulations and welcome. Barb has agreed to introduce Lisa. Barb?
This is Lisa Theodarides. She comes to us from George Students Academy, where she was the school nurse for 17 years before we stole her away. And we are really excited to have her join our nursing team. She's going to be the nurse at Reedsburg Middle School.
And you can see she has extensive background. And I mentioned to Lisa when I met her tonight, because I didn't meet with her, because Reagan did, that, "Don't be alarmed when I make a note that I've made an error in her salary." That salary's a hundred percent, Lisa's point eight, so you take eighty percent of that and that's going to be $49,580. So that was my error, I apologize. So Lisa Theodarides, is that correct?
Yeah, right.
There you go, thank you. I'll practice. Lisa, if you would endorse, please.
Second.
Great, who made their first motion to approve? Okay, great. All those in favor?
Congratulations, Lisa. David Theodarides is the superintendent of schools in Sanford, so that's where I was going with that name. Okay, reading essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation this evening is Mary Ann.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are commonly, our communities support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all our students and community members.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Principal presentation. We have this evening with us Mrs. Briggs from McGrath School. So Kristen, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna, I've got a little slideshow that I put together, and by little, I mean it's thirty-six slides, but I promised to talk about it. Mr. Lyons asked me to put together a little presentation on McGrath, and I was more than happy to do it. I love being able to share what we do, but as I got going, it just seemed to grow and grow and grow. So this is going to be just a snapshot of our busy pre-K through grade two school. McGrath, this is my fifth year at McGrath, and every year it's done. I just, I love my job, I'm very, very fortunate. So this is going to take a little bit through what we offer, and also other things like with the PTO, and then we have a PTO, and just other little things like that. So who are we? McGrath is a pre-K to grade two school. We have three hundred and forty-one students and seventeen teachers. We have two literacy interventionists and one additional interventionist that we share with as a mentor. We have two special education teachers, one speech and language teacher, and a guidance counselor, which she is full-time and which we appreciate very much. That became something new a few years ago. We have six educational technicians that work with our students that might require some additional support. We worked hard to create a vision statement together as a team. We did this with teachers and a techs. And our vision statement is that we are in partnership with our community, and we will empower every student to become globally responsible, accepting, caring, honest, and engaged citizens with a growth mindset for lifelong learning. We also have a McGrath motto. This is something new that we're starting this year, and we say this at all of our all-school shares, which is the little assemblies that we do, we do it about once every three or four weeks. So we have a motto this year, and we all say it together at the end of it, and it starts off our day awesome. We're responsible, we're respectful, we spread kindness, we have McGrath magnetism. So if we're looking at the academic and the actual overall schedule for us, we have a master schedule, which means that basically the entire school operates on like one certain schedule. There are a few areas where we needed to make a few adjustments to accommodate our literacy staff and special education staff, but having this master schedule is so helpful when we share students for classroom activities or when they're working together. It really, it makes a difference, being able to know exactly when a grade level is working on a certain subject matter, and I'll show you what that looks like. This is our master schedule for this year. You can see that, so kindergarten, everybody has literacy at nine, beginning at nine-thirty. And then everybody, and you can see that's just the overall, the basis for, and then you can see the lunch and recess schedules built in there as well. And the encore is another way of saying our specials, and you see that on there as well. So how do we decide what to teach? We do follow the district standards for each grade level. And we also make sure students are aware of their own learning by displaying and explaining daily learning targets. I'm going to show you some photos now of some how some teachers display their learning targets in their classroom. These are some kindergarten learning targets, beginning of the year, so that's where we Some first grade ones. These are second grade ones. And the neat thing, as I was going through, I was looking at the different math targets, and they're all essentially working on the same thing, just at different depths, which I think is really neat. They're all working at odds and evens, or grouping, and grouping evenly, it's really, it's awesome. So for math, last year, we began Vision 2.0, and it has been now implemented for a full year, and we're seeing amazing results. We're seeing that the students have got this level of understanding, and it's very impressive, very impressive. We also have iXL Math, which is a computer, it's like a supplemental piece that students can do, some of them do it at home. I know they like to, or in some of their little badges and things, but that's another thing that they can do. We also offer supplementary instruction in case of our students that might be struggling a little bit, and we also have enrichment as well, especially at the second grade level. That's Ms. Belanger working with some of her students. On the left is Mrs. Winston, she's doing the beginning group lesson part, and then a student on the right is working in the math book. This is some supplementary math on the iPads. It's a mapboard all. Students can refer back to that for how to spell words and what words mean. It's a great resource. This is a first grade mapboard all. For writing, we are using the Lucy Hawkins units of study. There are various genres that are covered, such as narrative, informational, opinion, poetry. We do pre- and post-assessments to make sure that there's growth there in those. This is Ms. Swister on the left, she's doing the mini lesson at the beginning of the writing workshop. And this is Bailey's on the right, she's also doing the same thing. For reading, we all use, or the reading workshop model, we are also using the Lucy Hawkins units of study for reading as well. Some of our teachers are really getting into this, and it's lots of fun to watch. It's a basic, it's a framework for how your reading workshop runs. We also use writing records, and I'll show you a picture of that in just a second. A writing record really is focusing on like how the student is reading a book, it's done at an individual level. The teacher will do check marks, I'll show you in a second what that looks like, to kind of gauge where the student is reading, and if that book is too easy, too hard. We also offer intervention support and enrichment support. That's a writing record. Each check mark means that the word was read correctly. You'll see some arrows, that means the student went back to the beginning of the sentence and read again. On the right side, you'll see M, S, V, and that's a way of us tracking whether they were using M for meaning, if they were using S for the structure of the text, or if they were using V for visual, which is what the word looks like. That's just, it's a coding technique, but it also lets us know exactly whether this story was too hard for them, or whether it was at their instructional level, so this would be a good book for them. And these are some students doing some independent reading with their book boxes. This is Mrs. Winston doing a guided reading group, where she's doing some literacy instruction with this group. Mrs. Kelly is doing a writing record. And Ms. Belanger's also doing a writing record. We're also piloting this year, which is really exciting, at K-1, Lucy Hawkins is, she has started something called the phonics unit of study, goes along with the other two, and so we're piloting that a little bit, just to see how, how the structure of that works. We have two kindergarten classrooms piloting that and two first grade classrooms, so we'll have some more information about that as the year progresses. So for specials, we have art, music, guidance, library, and PE. We're on what's called a six-day rotation, so each day is a letter day, A through F. And what happens is, in the event of a snow day or a holiday, maybe a Monday we don't have school, the next day would become whatever that letter day was supposed to be for a Monday. And what that does is that ensures that all students get the same number of specials. What was happening is we were noticing that students that had a Monday special for the month of January would not have that special pretty much. We look at the snow days and in services. This allows us to make sure that the students are consistently, are all consistently getting the same amount of instruction in their particular special. We're also excited to introduce, this is Dash robot, and this is beginning this year, students will be learning about coding with our little friend Dash, and I think Mary probably will have more information, and Nate will have more information about this later on, so, not later on today, but definitely later on, will learn more about Dash. We have art. Our students walk down to Weatherby and use their lovely art rooms, that's wonderful. We have music also down at Weatherby. This is Mr. Medor, and he does a thirty-minute session once during our six-day rotation. We have physical education twice during the six-day rotation, and the students will either work with Miss Kaplan at McGrath, which is where this picture is, or with Mr. Plastin And this is Ms. Sherman, and she is in technology related kindergarten classroom. We have libraries, this is Gary working with a group of students. In guidance, we're learning right now about filling buckets. The students are really good at that. And we have McGrath PTO, just a little snapshot of this group. They are phenomenal, we had a meeting last night, and the energy and the ideas that are flying around, oh my gosh, it was, it was so exciting, it was really fun. They are just a wonderful support for our students and staff. They orchestrate various fundraisers throughout the year. They provide funding for many of our field trips. They provide RADS Kids, which is a computer program. They do a lot with Teacher Appreciation Week, they call it a week, movie night, Halloween party, a Sweetheart Dance, and they have helped support us in getting authors into our building, and just amazing, they're tremendous. We couldn't do a lot of things without them and their support. We also have a very strong population of volunteers at our school, which is also wonderful. We have a protocol that we follow there, but there are lots of opportunities for them, and we are very fortunate to have that as well. Speaking of working with others, we have a great partnership with UMaine and Hudson and EMCC. We work very closely with them. UMaine does send us the most students. We consistently have at least one to two student teachers per semester. We host approximately eight to twelve students from ERL 319, and this is per semester also, and then additional three to four students through the one-hundred-hour field placement. And I look, we have a little sign-in sheet when they come in, and I've looked before and just, I'm overwhelmed by how many, there's always somebody coming from UMaine into our building, it's amazing. But our teachers are always willing to open up their classrooms and share their expertise, so it's a win for us. We have actually hired one student that was a student teacher so far, just since I've been there, that was a student teacher at our school, and just, you know, it's a perfect because you get to see firsthand their teaching. So really, it's a win-win for both, and we love it. There, I got through thirty-six slides.
Did anybody have any questions? Now's the time for questions. Yes, any questions anyone can thank out for? I would encourage you, if you would have not been to McGrath, to contact Kristen, have a tour of the school.
Yeah.
Physical playing gives you a different feel.
Or come tomorrow. That's right, tomorrow.
Yeah, there you go, come tomorrow.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the upcoming MSMA conference. We have included a draft sample of the tremendous opportunities that you can take advantage of as a board member. You can see the theme there, that most conferences sessions run about an hour and five minutes. On a typical day, on Thursday, there are probably seven or eight conferences you can attend. Friday gets down, down to around one-thirty, two o'clock. So that is open for your selection when you arrive there. I also included a copy, Reagan and I are presenting at the conference, and also Sue O'Brien and our teacher, Mrs. Grove at Wagner, is also presenting at this year's conference. So if you do want to go, all I have to do is just let Gloria know, we'll register you. If you want lodging, then she will also make that arrangement for you. In addition to the conference, every school board is given the opportunity to have what they call a voting delegate, where you go, and then on Thursday afternoon at about two-thirty, we have what they call a delegate assembly. And what the delegate assembly does is they focus on the resolutions that were mailed to you. And then boards will take a vote to see if the resolutions are going to be endorsed or negated. And I've included those, I don't necessarily need to go through them with you, but I didn't want to highlight a couple in particular. The first one, I was actually a little bit awestruck with the, with the first one, to tell you the truth. I'm expressing my opinion here. I was surprised that the Maine School Board Association would support the inclusion of CDS in public schools. And I guess I have a lot of opinions on that, I don't really share them tonight, but that's a, that's a massive change that we will see to public education. On the other hand, maybe it may be beneficial, and maybe I just have a level of naivety for it. Proficiency-based diplomas, you can see they have taken a position on that as well, and special education and so on. So that basically is the menu for the resolution. So in a nutshell, if you're interested, I think so far, Mary Ann is the only one I think that we've received. So if you're interested, let Gloria know in the next couple of weeks. I think you'll have a fabulous experience. I know our board members sitting around here that have been to it, find it very enriching. The other thing that I'm going to mention in a conference I went to last week is, the conference is good, but I think the most powerful part of something like that is the networking, that you can, you know, there's about six hundred to six hundred and fifty board members at this day and a half session, so it is very, very powerful. Any questions or comments? Oh, you're a quiet group type. Okay, so just let us know if you're interested. I did mention that I, last week, I had the occasion to attend the New England School Superintendent's Conference, which is held in September of each year in one of our New England states. And this year it was in Stowe, Vermont, so it was, it was very interesting to attend that. I did share, which I can't find right now, some themes with you that I wanted to go over, but the first one that will come to mind is one that we discussed at the ed committee tonight, and that's dual enrollment. And dual enrollment is something that's become very powerful in public schools, particularly in New England. And what that basically means, if you don't know what the term dual enrollment is, that as high school students, you can take courses at a college, online or whatever, that will obviously supplement and augment the schedule that students have at your, at your traditional high school. The other thing that's, that's very problematic, again, in my opinion, in the state of Vermont, they are going back to school governance structure like we had back in the nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven year, where you had school unions. And the best example I can give you is, back in nineteen ninety-five, Union Thirty-four was Glenn Byrne, Herman, and one other. So basically what happens is you're a superintendent for three independent school boards, and one of the superintendents that presented from Rhode Island, excuse me, from Vermont, he is a superintendent of seven districts, seven school boards, seven budgets, multiple collective bargaining contracts, seventy-five school board members. I mean, it was, it was massive just to kind of get a feeling about the structure of that. The other thing that we discussed that actually Mrs. Briggs and I are meeting in a couple weeks on, is before and after school program. And Kristen mentioned to me back a couple weeks ago that she's had a number of requests from parents over the years on, what can we provide for children before school and after school? And there's now entities out there that are really grooming options, and we're, I've already met with one company, and we're meeting with another company. And it surprised me that the company we're meeting with in a couple weeks has this program operational and very effective in Holton and Prescott. The company that Chris and I met with a couple weeks has not entered into Maine yet, but they're very common and very prevalent in Connecticut. So now the word is that McGrath School, for example, will have literacy, numeracy programs before or after school, or behavioral health activities and things like that. And basically, you could say, as a parent, that's great because my child will go to McGrath at seven, at eight o'clock in the morning, come home at four o'clock in the afternoon, if you so choose to have your, have your child enrolled in that program. So we're, we're looking at that, and I'm actually quite excited to see the options there.
Would that be something you would explore for Winnipeg as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know that there's a lot of families in Winnipeg that are frustrated and struggling because there aren't any after-school, limited after-school care options.
Right now, we're kind of, Chris and I are trying to get a feel for it, and then we can see how we can then disperse that out to the other schools. With the other kids who are even earlier in Winnipeg, right? Exactly, exactly. So we'll be looking at that. The conference basically focused, we had a hundred and seven New England superintendents there, but basically focused on non-supervised school funding, dual enrollment, reimaging classrooms, about how instruction today in the year two thousand and eighteen is so different, I'm looking at Jane, it's so different than five years ago, ten years ago, and fifteen years ago as classroom teachers. So for a superintendent, when you're talking about curriculum instruction, and not so much about budget, that's what I like about those conferences. I did, I have served on this board for thirteen years, but I've given it away, I'm like Wally, that's my last meeting, and we appointed two other, each state has two superintendents that serve on their board of directors, and they plan the conferences. The conference next year will be in New Hampshire, and then Maine will host the conference in twenty-twenty. Last time, we hosted it six years ago, we held it at the San Maset, and then six years before that, we held it at the Portland Regency in the old port in Portland. So it's a great opportunity, and I've encouraged Reagan to pay attention to this because, and I'll go back to my major point, I feel very comfortable calling any, well, not any, but most New England school superintendents, because I may believe I know them. But on Monday of this week, I had an issue that I actually talked to Mary Ann about, I called the National School Boards Association. So as a superintendent, one of the most important things that you can do is, how do you reach out to people and network with people? Because guess what? People are out there to help you, and you just need to take the willingness to email or call or whatever, and this group right here is very, very powerful. A lot going on in New England states now. And again, and I'll stop, again, high frustration with respect to finding qualified superintendents. That's why these districts are going to be multiple school districts for one superintendent. It's going to kill the superintendent, in my opinion. Any comments on that? Questions?
They used to have a, was it the Bridge Program?
Yes.
But that fell apart because the kids weren't getting the credit they were paying for or something.
Yes, that's right. That's a good recall, Tony. If I remember correctly, Nick and Bill, maybe you can help me, the major issue, and I don't want to put blame on there, was a major issue was the receptivity of the university to do the credit reimbursement. Wasn't that it? Among maybe some other things?
One of the challenges, I think, faces is that you were supposed to have a class here that was a bridge-level class that only had those bridge students in it, which makes a very different challenge when you're still trying to alter the scope of your other curriculum.
Yeah, sure.
It's still on their radar, but they've changed their rules, I've been having a conversation with Greg Miller at UTC in another week or so about it, just to see what they've become a little more flexible with and open with, because with the competition of all these other schools offering dual enrollment, rich can't be so prescribed with how their approach was about three years ago.
Yeah. The other thing that reminds me, Tony, remember last year, we had the innovative schools for middle schools? That didn't succeed either. A couple, I don't want to leave this because I just found, I stole Karen's sheet here. A couple other things I did want to accentuate, because we talked about one of the barriers, and not surprising, barriers are transportation. Think about Vermont or New Hampshire or Roosted County. I mean, if you're following a school construction, they're looking about building a high school in the valley that will serve Fort Kent, Madawaska, Van Buren, and Alleghash. Now, being from the county, I can say, good luck with that, okay? The other one that was the significant problem was internet. A lot of these rural towns don't have internet capabilities, and therefore you have significant disadvantages for the children. Policies and procedures, because the significant turnover in superintendencies, you don't have the consistency of leadership. This one I found very intriguing, and actually I was talking to Matt Seer today up in Vezey, because Vezey doesn't have a high school, so they have to pay tuition where the child goes. In Vermont, they pay tuition to private schools. And so if, if your child goes to Bellows Free Academy, to make that up, which is the St. Elmo in Vermont, the tuition there may be eighteen thousand. They're paying eighteen thousand versus the state tuition at nine thousand. So they're trying to create some legislation to put a, put a cap on that, much like in Maine, that's the way we do it in Maine. Co-curricular, extracurricular, these are small schools in Vermont and New Hampshire, you know, maybe thirty-seven kids in a school, or seventy-five kids in a high school, they're small towns, significant challenges. So that just gives you a flavor, there's a lot of commonality between among superintendents, and maybe a different degree, for example, transportation may be a different issue for us here with respect to can't find bus drivers, well, in the case may be, versus in Vermont, maybe traveling a hundred and fifty miles a day, you know, to and from school to make that number up. And then the one I'll summarize and conclude, I love this one. Environment drives behavior. In a school setting, what's your environment, what's your climate, what's your ethos for the workplace and for students? Environment drives behavior. Okay, thank you.
Could I ask a question on the before and after school programming?
Yes.
Would, could, would or could that play into changing school start times? So we're starting school later, so, because of all the sleep issues that have been identified?
It may, yes, it may. Matter of fact, I'm actually glad you brought that point up. In Southern Maine, the last two or three years, there've been a number of attempts to change starting and stopping times, particularly for high schools. That's met with some controversy, because we, I'm putting myself in the center, we as parents have a hard time changing certain things. So even though research clearly says a high school student should start at nine o'clock or nine fifteen versus seven fifty-five at HA, to move that through the community is a major undertaking, but the answer to your question is yes. And that's something you folks may want to explore in the next two, three, or four years, what is the starting time of your schools? And of course, the other thing, in my little perfect world I live in, it'd be nice, in my opinion, if all of our schools my opinion, if all of our schools started and stopped at the same time for professional development for our teachers. Because something problematic for us is when we have teachers going from Smith School to McGraw, you know, you're losing 15, 20, 30 minutes at a time a day with respect to that disconnect. So there's some changes there that need to be in the pipeline.
But transportation is an issue, Erin.
Currently, right now, that would almost be, that would be the deciding factor, the fact that we'd have to have 15 more school bus drivers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But they're making it happen. I mean, they're consulting with the community, and I mean, and they face those same challenges, and they were making it happen.
What was it, though? It was like six years ago or so that we talked about this publicly, and it felt pretty flat?
We did. And another thing that we publicly talked about maybe 10 or 11 years ago was where our, the population of our two middle schools, the children weren't living in the right towns. So we, at that time, we had 135 children at Wagner, and we had 300 something at Rees-Brook. And believe it or not, about 10 years ago, I called a number of people that lived kind of where you live, Rock, on going down through the code, and I asked them, Mrs. Jones, would you mind having your child go from Rees-Brook to Wagner or vice versa? No way! I moved here because I wanted my child to go to Rees-Brook, I moved here, I wanted my child to go to Wagner. So even though things don't align sometimes, how you process that with parents to change protocol procedures or practices that we've had well in trends for years is a monumental task, monumental task. But those are things that over time we'll have to look at doing in all school districts.
I think if my kids knew they could sleep in an extra hour, then they might want to go.
There you go.
Four tenths of a mile the other way instead of seven the other.
And we actually had a subcommittee, I think in Wally, we had an ad hoc committee back about 10 years ago that came together to see if we could change the boundary lines of our schools. And that fell flat. So enough of that, but it was a great conference, and Stowe, Vermont, it was a pretty blue town this time of year as well.
Yes, sir. Clarifying something you said earlier about internet.
Yes.
Are you talking about the schools, you know, not getting internet, you're talking about the schools or the parents?
Both.
The schools too?
Yes.
There are companies out there, there's one huge that comes to mind, it's basically a Dish Network or DirecTV.
Yep.
For...
That came up in the conversation, yeah. Of course, I use a slogan, so goes Maine, so goes the nation.
Right.
Because in 1997 or 98, correct me if I'm wrong, Governor King brought in one-to-one technology to middle school. 20 years ago.
Right.
Maine had one-to-one technology and internets in public schools.
Right.
So yes, it was both schools and parents.
Well, what I'm saying is, well, I don't want to go further.
Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah. It's available.
That's a good point. I think that's, again, how, you know, your CEO reaches out to find what options, opportunities are out there.
Right.
Probably you could discover that there's an answer, there's an answer to your question.
Right.
Okay. Lucas and Sarah, you're in on HA.
All right. So basically, this year, we'd like to continue to improve on the student response surveys that were introduced last year. Possibly, that could mean generating multiple submissions on a recurring basis, possibly every month or every two months, or something like that. For anyone who doesn't remember the surveys that were sent out last year, they basically offered students a way to connect directly with the representatives about any suggestions, thoughts, or feedback that they had concerning the district as a whole. So we're hoping that surveys will be able to, be able to be changed in advance based on meeting topics. That way we have more accurate and specific insights from students about the things that we're discussing at a given time. Hopefully, that's going to work to further improve the communication between the representatives and the students, which doesn't exist very much right now. And I think that could be very valuable in the future, especially for discussions concerning the students themselves. So once again, if anyone has any suggestions or topics that they'd like to collect student responses about, we'd be more than happy to tailor the questions to different topics if you'd like to contact either one of us about that.
Sarah, anything to add tonight? Anything else?
I think I definitely agree with Lucas. I think that's a great idea. I remember last year I saw that survey, several surveys through email, and I found that as a student, I was able to communicate, connect that gap between the community and the student body. I'd like to add more, but it's my first meeting, and I just want to.
Want to give that opportunity.
What's going on in the school in terms of activities? Is there anything exciting going on or keeping the students?
Yeah, definitely. Like I said, I was in the drama club, and drama club is, apparently, present their fall production, actually in December, so not like a winter production, but we are practicing right now, and it's the Radiant Girls. And I think this production is really great, both educationally and for improving our arts program, because it is a historical production about radiation in the workplace for women in the 1920s, 30s, and 40s. So it is beginning of December, I don't have the exact dates off the top of my head, but that could be great if, you know, everybody could come to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, Reagan?
I would love, not that I want any, to give you any feedback on it, but I would love to see the student survey. Is that something that you'll send out for us, just to see what kinds of questions you're asking?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll send that to everyone, and also, I'll have all the responses compiled on individual document, so that way I'll be able to send that, and you can view that as well easily.
Thank you.
Bravo also. Okay, Reagan?
Okay, in your folders, you did have the monthly financials. I will go and put that up. So, before we start in on the financial report figures themselves, we had discussion both at Finance Committee, and last month we talked about this as a full board, that you would appreciate some context in looking at these reports around timing. So we had talked about, was it possible to put an extra column on the report to let you know how much time had unfolded in the school calendar? And what we're going to do in the interim is go ahead and have me come each meeting with the figures so that you know that context, because some of these articles are best represented by having a context of the fiscal year, which runs July 1st, June 30. And others are best represented by more of a school year look. And we'll talk about them tonight in that context, so you can understand the difference. So I just want you to know that we have 73% of our fiscal year remaining, and we have 84% of our student-teacher school year remaining, all right? So let's look at the articles themselves. If you consider a school year for students and teachers, Article One fits well within that type of a context, because we have a lot of funding come out of Article One once teachers are back and once students are in the house. So you'll see that we've expended about 81% of that article, that's right on track with the 84% of the school year remaining. Article Two is special education, that includes all of our special education teachers, our programming for students. So once again, you'll see that 89% is right in the ballpark for 84% of the school year remaining. Article Three is CTE, which we no longer will be tracking because they are paying for things out of their own funds with CTE. Other instruction is extracurricular. That is also an article that aligns very well with school year, because we're having the events of extracurricular, whether it be clubs or athletics, happening when the students are present, of course. Student-staff support includes many things that are heavily used during the school year, but we also have some things that happen outside of the school year, like professional development. We do have some things in August that happen right before the teachers come back, we have some different offerings there, so we're getting people out. Also, we're purchasing curriculums starting July 1st so that they are in the school district and ready for use well before the students are back. So we have heavier expenditure out of that line in the fiscal year. So I would align Article Five with the 73%. System administration, we are running the central office in those activities all year round, and so that would be fiscal year alignment. School administration, we're certainly paying administration throughout the year, but we have heavier use of school administration cost lines when folks are back in school, because that's when principals are funding things that students and teachers need in their lines. Transportation's an interesting one. We certainly have the most heavy use of transportation when students are going to school routinely. But remember, we do have summer school, that we are running a small fleet of buses. And we also have the contract payment that's due in August, but generally, we can align that with the school year. Article Nine is probably the article where we expend the most on a fiscal year basis, because July and August is when we're doing our heaviest project outlay, and we spend a lot of the money upfront so that the schools are ready for use once we get through summer. Debt service is spent only two times a year. Debt service payments come out in November and in May, and it's based on interest and principal payments. So we have schedules that are literally set in stone years ahead, so we can predict that one down to the eyelash. And then Article 11, we did not have money in Article 11 this year, which is unusual. We have supported our school nutrition program from Article 11, but we had carryover last year, so we decided to see how the program could run on a self-sufficient basis. So from that, I hope you can see, I think we're running very well, and we're on track for having those contexts of whether we're expending from fiscal year side or school year side. Any questions about that?
Reagan, I would say that the context, though, was very helpful, and breaking it down that way makes a great deal of sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what is next is the Assistant Superintendent Report. Just to let you know, it feels like we've just kicked off school, but we are going to start talking budget. We're going to start talking earlier this year. We had a goal last year where we wanted to get out in front of it, and I can't say that we made that goal as well as we would have liked, but we plan this year that we would like to have a November initial budget meeting. We're still coming together with what the agenda for that would look like, and we're talking with a couple of other districts that do this. The early budget meetings are really idea meetings, where you're hearing from people about what their wishes, wants, and desires for the budget is. We're also listening for where we hear that there are pressures on the budget that we'll need to be looking out for as we make tighter plans. So please be looking for that announcement of not only the date, but what the content of the meeting will be, and be sure you spread the word so we can have as much participation as possible. As far as building improvements, I want to let you know that we did put out the snow removal bid, and we have completed that process. We will be moving forward with Wellman Paving as our new district plowing contractor. Wellman Paving's bid came in significantly lower than competition's bid. I will also say that we are very pleased, because the price we pay this year will be the same as what we paid last year. And we certainly felt pressure on the budget around that bid opening, so we're pleased. Wellman will now be plowing the entire Hampden Campus, our Winterport Campus. Also, just to note, they plow the town of Newburgh, including Newburgh School, where our prepay is, the town of Winterport, the town of Newburgh, the old Hampden Academy in Avalon Village. So they're around. But we have already had an initial meeting, we also will be having another meeting where there will be a walkabout on the campus to identify all the areas that need to be plowed. I will say this, when you transition to a new contractor with something like plowing, inevitably, a spot might be missed, or the snow will be placed in a location it never has been before, and so if you hear anything, let me know, because the best way to solve it is to get on it fast. And I'd also like to put a thank you out to Jacob Metzler. He helped me with making Google Maps with highlights of all plowed areas down to the walkways that we have students on, so that the bidders could actually see what they were bidding on, and it worked really well for them, so thank you to him.
What part of that custodial is responsible for something around the school, maybe?
They shovel the literal entrances. So any place that there's a door where we're getting either staff or students in, they are shoveling those. But there are some sidewalks that are smaller that they shovel as well, but for the most part, we're having things cleared. But I will say, even those small areas, when you're a McGraw School and you have literally 25 doors, it is, it is a workout, and I commend all of our custodial team. They are here bright and early on the days we have school, and the snow's falling anyway, but on snow days, it is busy to get the doors open. Okay, I just want to update you, I don't know if you've all heard, but we had an outbreak of ants at the McGraw School playground. And you would think that this would be relatively easy to solve. We actually have an integrated pest management plan, all school districts are required to. We have a contractor we work with, Orkin, that comes and assists us with this. But in getting informed about this through the state, it has led to us capturing ants, going to the University of Maine for ant identification, thinking about alternative methods to spraying, and timing of how environments work for ants. And Friday, David Greener and I will be going to formal IPM training for the European Red Ants Integrated Pest Management in Quorn, Florence.
Ancholes?
Yes. So we aren't going to spray our ants, and it's not because we don't want to take care of it, it's that the timing has passed for that to be effective. And although you can do it, it really won't matter, and you're exposing children, and all of us, to unnecessary chemical treatment. So I'm really pleased with how seriously this was taken. The resources at the state level are amazing for things like this, and it's really given me a great learning curve that you should always ask twice, because there's probably more than one answer. So we've done a nice job through our custodial teams, the administration at the school, I think the kids have been taken care of. Would you say it's worked out okay?
Everything's fine.
Okay, great. All right. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to Kathy Kittredge and our school nutrition team. They did a Harvest Week celebration, I think it was over a week ago, almost two weeks, and they brought in local providers to provide a great deal of our menus. And I actually had occasion to go to Wagner and enjoy their harvest lunch down there, and it was truly impressive. And the number of farm-to-school connections that have been made in our school nutrition program is outstanding. So I'm really impressed, and it was a great day for kids, but I think overall, the lunch program is wonderful for them as well, on a day-to-day basis. Do we have any questions, the board members? Jane?
I just have one. Reagan and I had chatted about request lists that teachers, I had had, some people had asked me about the wish list that teachers are asking for. And I was a little surprised, because having been in the Budget Committee, I know that we had upped that supply, and we had spent a lot of time chatting about that. So I called Reagan and just expressed my concern that what kinds of things were teachers still asking for, that we were not supplying, that we should be supplying. So Reagan has gone ahead, like she would, and has done some research on that, so I would love to have some feedback on that.
Okay. So I'm going to just give you an opening, and then I'm going to have a couple of our administrators speak to this. So we do have school supply lists that go out primarily in our K-8 of schools. At the high school, we aren't sending lists home, but I do think students go into classes at times, and here, it would be good if you had a binder or notebooks, and you guys can speak to this tonight about what you are asked for. But in the elementary environment, middle school environment, we are sending home lists. They do have items on the list that you might consider to be basics, like paper, crayons, pencils. I want to clarify, it is not that we aren't providing those items in the school, they absolutely are accessible to students, but as you can imagine, you go through a lot of pencils and a lot of crayons, and oftentimes, either students like to have their own, just simply because that feels good for them. Or we know that having a replenish could be helpful to the school. We've talked a lot about items that are expensive. Because what really matters, I think, to families right now is when you go to your local store, when you get up to the counter, the price that is aggregated on your items can often be quite surprising. And sometimes, we're asking for things that are a little more expensive, like particular binders, some of which cost up to $30. So I'm going to turn it over now, so the principals can speak to what they're finding and what their experience is. But please leave tonight knowing that donations in RSG 22 abound. We actually have so many donations coming in that we're not utilizing all of the donations we have. So there is a way to make this work for everyone, I think.
I know. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I absolutely will look into this further. I know, as a parent of children also, I understand, I do. I know that at McGraw, we do, we love our crayons and our markers. And so absolutely, we will look into this further. And we will see how we can streamline this process and hopefully come to a resolution of this. Thank you.
One major question I had was the $30 binder.
The what?
$30 binder. Yeah, I mean, there were some about... I had two specific ones. One was about a binder that was going to cost $30. I had no answer. None. Well, I don't know. I'll find out.
At the middle school level, and Dawn's here, we can speak to this. The middle school level, we have been recommending to parents that they consider the type of binder that zips shut, because we know that middle school students function really well when things are trapped.
Right, 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 right. And that's what you will explain to them.
One of the things that we also came across was a misunderstanding with some of our parents. We put on there eight binder folders. And those are the pocket pieces that you can actually put inside the binder. And they interpreted that as eight different binders. That is, one of the parents I was able to talk to, I'm like, "No, not at all." As long as they have something that can come in and they can close and keep it together, that's the only thing that we're looking for. But we also told them that if they don't have it, that's okay, because we have some in the supply closets as well, that we're able to get. Now, it's not the fancy trap or keeper that's zipped up, but it is something that would be helpful for organizing them a little.
I think, just personally, I think that if it is something that is required by the curriculum, for the curriculum, that it is something we should think about supplying. Granted, you do have something in the closet that kids that can't afford it. But that becomes very obvious, that I can't afford. So therefore, they start the school year. And that's why I think what bothered me the most is these kids starting the school year before they've even got going. And they're already feeling that I don't have and I can't produce what other people can. So I do think that if it's something, when we talked about budget before, I think if something that is really required and it is used and necessary, that it is something we need to think about, do we want to put that in our supplies? I'm not saying we have to, but I think it's something that we should consider.
I think about, it's a lot of work to get everything on that list. And if we could create a packet that I could just one-click buy the whole packet, but then also like the recorders, that you purchase a recorder, and then there's a line for people who are more fortunate. Would you like to donate any recorder? So if you could purchase a packet of your supplies, and would you like to donate some packets of supplies? And I imagine there would be a lot of resubordination.
But I'm not sure. I'm concerned that we are even doing that. We are not a poor district, for the most part. We have a very hefty, robust budget. And if we are asking for markers and even a wish list, markers and pencils, I just, I'm, I don't know. I'm concerned.
Richard, what about Wagner, Richard?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, in my experience over the last number of years, it broke the ankle jaw, you know, I started getting emails or phone calls from parents.
Oh, yeah.
What do you, you know, what do you do with this? And that sort of thing. And I'm just looking at the sixth grade list, and I was looking at the others a short while ago. They're pretty much interchangeable, you know, paper, pencil, three-ring binder. That's what you need. So I think it would give a lot of optional things. But again, I think the importance of having, I think we have school packages in all our schools and things like that. So no kid will go without that.
And I'm not concerned about that. I'm not concerned about kids going without. I'm just saying that, when it was brought to my attention, I was shocked because we did go up with supplies in our budget. And I'm not sure that with a $31 million budget, we should be asking for pencils.
Yeah.
I just, I just have a concern with that. And kids do know, the kids that have the crayon box that has 24, and then the ones that are taking ones from the school that have eight. I mean, that is, it sticks out. And the kids know it. And if you're, if you need a $30 binder and someone's, parents can only afford a $6 one.
Sure.
Or are they going one up the supply closet? That's just too obvious for me.
Have we ever provided pencils for students?
We do provide pencils.
Oh, yes.
It's just, I will say this, there's a level here that's just a reality of tradition.
Right, oh, right, right.
And we're continuing to go down that road of parents asking, "We're providing this list." But I think it is time for us to take stock in the points everyone's making and really reflect, especially with the increasing prices that these lists can generate. What, where is the line, and what should we be doing about that?
One of the things about the folders, just for the junior high, what's so frustrating, since we're talking about it, is that they want different colors. And they have a tremendous array of different colors that you want. And what I have found is that it's impossible to buy these colors in one store. You cannot just go to one store. And so you have, and it's a special type of colored folder, you know, with the hole. And so, and then you arguing with your kid over what they're saying. Where we're like, "Well, the list says red." And then she's like, "You know, two blues are fine." I mean, just write red on a blue. It's not just me doing this, I actually see this occur at the stores, where I see parents arguing with their kids over the colors of the folders. So as long as you're thinking about it, you know, maybe that's really something to think about in terms of, are these folders, different colors so truly important?
So I don't want to beat this, keep beating it. But John, do you have something?
Well, I've got something along this area. So my son is in a class here at Henn Academy, and a requirement for that was $140 calculator. Which, I mean, that's fine, but I was wondering what happens to students who can't afford it. That's a significant expense, which I wouldn't think a school would provide. So something like that, I don't know what happens if a student can't afford that. Can they not take part in that class?
We have those available here to sign up for students to use.
Good to know, thank you.
I remember my graphic.
Can I speak up, though? I'd love to hear from IT student rep.
Great.
Yes, absolutely.
So basically, at the high school level, typically, we're expected to have two things for each class. One being a folder for paperwork we're given, and the other being a notebook for notes, obviously. And I've found that over the years, I can get by with just a notebook, pencils, and that folder. Since we have the Chromebook, you know, we can basically put all our information on there and just have things all online. As for the graphing calculators, I know quite a few people who don't own graphing calculators and do borrow from the school. And they seem to work fine in that position. I do also know that some more advanced classes, where you get, you know, stacks of paperwork, will recommend that you have a three-ring binder that will fold open. It's like a hardcover. So that would be recommended by most teachers for those classes. Personally, I don't use them. I'll just fill up my folders with the papers I get for one semester and then clean them out after a while and things like that, which seems to work the best for me.
Why are we issuing Chromebooks and stacks of paper at the same time?
Because we're big on it.
It's just like calculators.
There's a lot, I think that's such a wide-open question for some available resources we have online, some available resources we have in the current... You know, unless we just says, "No more paper," and go all online, then that would end that. But I think right now, we're still in this in-between of, we do have a lot of resources, and our paper resource is hard copies. And we do have resources that are online. I don't know that many of our teachers say, "You need to have this many folders and this many colors and all that." It's just more about what you feel is important for organization in your class.
Yeah, I think, sorry.
No, go for it, please.
Like you said, when you don't have, when you're in elementary school, you get these lists, and the teachers require certain things. And maybe the schools can provide them. I find a lot of parents are willing to purchase these things. And if they can't, there's a lot of help in that. But I do think that we need to look into the schools helping out with that a little, because, like you said, we're not a poor district. As for high school, there is no list. It's basically, however you study best, however you are organized best, it prepares you for higher learning. And, you know, when you enter the workforce and they're not going to give you a list, you need this. For the graphing calculator, I did have a big struggle with that. When I was in ninth grade, my math teacher, my geometry teacher, said that I would need one for the next year of math. And my mom went out and purchased one. It was $120. And she was like, "Oh, I just found this one that's $50." And so she returned the $121, $20 one and got the $50 one. But many teachers don't teach that way. So they say, you know, there is a cheaper version, but they won't help you learn like that, because they don't know. It's harder that way. It's difficult to teach some of the class how to use one calculator while the few kids are using the other one. And, but I do think this school does a good job of providing calculators. I think that just needs to be vocalized more in the classroom, that there are, is an option. So you don't feel like you need to stand out.
I too was the one with the cheaper graphing calculator. I had the same problem many years ago.
All right, so I think it's fair to say if...
I just have one other question.
Yes.
Have we looked at any apps for these Chromebooks? I mean, we're giving them a computer. There must be an app that they can graph on their computer.
You can do it on a website. You don't even need an app. But I think she hit it, though, it's like, these teachers are training how to use them on a certain device. And so it's, they're comfortable in it. That does need to be looked at.
We already have the technology that we spent money on to give kids.
That's the first thing I thought when I said that.
Michelle, I'm going to back you.
Why you spend $140, you can just do it online.
You look like you know what you're saying.
So Tony, an example of this would be for a class I teach called Quadrant Global Perspective. We don't have textbooks for it, because it's about present-day issues. So if I had to print a textbook, it would be your own. So if it doesn't work out. But there, there's a curriculum that I like to use from Brown University for high school students that provides articles, it provides lesson plans for teachers, provides all this stuff. Each unit that I can buy per unit digitally is $16, which is great. Like, that's a, that's a pretty good deal. And I have unlimited for that $16. Actually, they might have increased it to $25. Either way, it's a good deal. I have unlimited access to photocopy it, but it is copyright-prohibited for putting on a digital classroom, including a master-protected classroom like Google Classroom. So I'd be breaking copyright law if I did that, and I'm not.
I was only asking about graphing calculator.
Right, but this is an example for social studies. And so in order to buy the same version of that curriculum that does have the digital copyright, is $10,000. So it makes a lot more sense to print out, because paper is cheaper than $10,000.
Well, I'm not worried about paper. I'm just worried about using our laptops to graph instead of buying a $120 calculator.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you said earlier, why do we have a notebook? Oh, okay.
The chances are.
Someone said something about it. So that's an example of how it's super expensive to buy the master-protected curriculum. But I still don't have a book, so I need to do something. So I need to print out.
Thank you, Michelle. We have a full agenda, so I'm going to move on, okay? But I think we will ask, ask for further conversations, and we'll take this to budget. I think we've all heard, and certainly, these are not new themes. So any other questions of board members? Marianne?
I do. I really would like to know the extent to which consent is covered in our health, family life, and sex education curriculum. And it's not just a high school concern, because habits of mind start early. So I would, and I set this out, and Bill kind of kindly shared with me some information. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about that issue.
So Bill, why don't you go ahead, because you're not responding by email. I think you can do a better job than I can with that.
So, you know, one of our required courses for graduation includes a presentation from Parkster Peace that talks about healthy relationships and healthy dating and the quality cycle. And it really does, and they even talk in the beginning, this is what we're going to be talking about, healthy choices, healthy relationships, expectations and all that. So that we really do, as a graduation requirement, that piece is front and center, isn't it? What is consent, what is not consent? So students are getting a further grasp of that. And, you know, that's part of the curriculum. Students can opt out, or parents can opt out, if they choose. But certainly, it's part of our required curriculum that every student at A.J. will have.
I will say that at the middle level, we are reviewing, we've got some new resources for help. And so actually, I'm meeting with those folks on Friday to see the breadth and depth of various things that are in there, and what would be appropriate, what would not be appropriate. And also, at that level, to give parents, and, you know, the high school, you know, parents, they would have to make a decision, whether that would be all right for their child to be part of or not.
And we have a process for, if we're talking about opting out, which any student can do of any part of the curriculum, we utilize guidance to do that. So it's a much more intimate setting, where a student could, or a parent could contact guidance and say, "I'm concerned with this part of the curriculum." And then that usually goes with the conversation there. And we do thoroughly follow that, so that the guidance counselor will talk to the parent and the student and the teacher, so they're on the same page. And it's not a big deal, and a student can slide up and do some, or do something different at that time.
Thank you. I have one other, my traditional comment. So pursuant to J.I.H.R.F., Mr. Lyons, have you received or provided approval for requests for assistance from ICE or CBP agents?
I have not.
Have you received any requests from ICE or CBP or law enforcement acting on their behalf for information about or access to any of our students?
No, thank you.
One comment, and it really probably should have been last meeting. We had a really nice discussion when David Regan was asking for permission to run for office again. And I think we clearly saw some of those arguments, and I appreciate both sides of the argument. But something that I wasn't able to articulate at that time, and I would just like to make a comment, that what he's asking to do is essentially hold a dual role. And I think that's fantastic. But we, when we do find our staff or teachers in a dual role, I think it's important that we provide enough support to them to balance and to kind of hold that position to make sure that when they're in the classroom, they're doing what they need to do for their teaching. And when they're not, their other role doesn't necessarily trickle into that classroom in any inappropriate way. So I just, that's a hard thing to carry for someone, to hold two roles. And so I just want to make sure that we are aware of it and provide our teachers enough support to balance it.
Well, related to that, we have dual roles as board members and as parents, many of us. And that is also a very difficult thing to balance. And we have to be mindful of that when we engage with our, with the public and with our school.
And just on that subject, at the last meeting, it was stated that this was required by the contract. And then looking at the contract, the contract says that a teacher is entitled, you know, can have a leave of absence. And I think that it says nothing about breaking this into days here, days there. I don't consider that a leave of absence. I'm not revisiting the, you know, the board has decided, and that's fine. But I'm just saying is that I think that that was inaccurate, in an accurate statement to say that, or a conclusionary statement to say that this is required by the contract. And looking at the language of the contract, I just don't think that's true. I think if he had taken a whole year off, absolutely, he'd be entitled to that.
Any other questions aboard members? If not, we'll go right into committee reports and finance committee.
Alan, do you want to do that?
Yeah, we met last week. Oh, stuff's moving over. I wasn't present for the meeting, that's why.
We actually met this week, Alan.
Was that this week? Yes, it was this week.
Yes, it was this week.
Yeah, this. It does seem like last week.
Okay, so our finance committee meeting covered several different facets. We actually looked back at FY eighteen and looked at our summary articles coming out of eighteen. We started to discuss the warrant articles that would require a transfer because you need to have each warrant article individually at zero balanced by an article in which there was money remaining. So we will be bringing back a proposal for Articles four, six and eight. And if you look on your sheet right here, you'll see that Article four is other instruction, which is heavily extracurricular. Article six, which is system administration, and then Article eight, which was transportation. And the overages in each of those was, I would describe as minimal, but we need to make sure that we corrected for those. So we'll be coming back to the finance committee next month with those proposal ideas. We also looked at the revenue that came in FY eighteen and we came in within half a percent of our projected budget for revenue, so we were very pleased about that. We also found that tuition was an especially strong area for our revenue stream, as was the pull down of diesel tax refund revenue that our new accountant Trish Hayes was able to work on and bring to us. So we're pleased with that. The unaudited fund balance review occurred. We look back over many, many years for our undesignated fund balance review. We won't know a final figure until the audit returns, which is due by December thirty-first, so we will report a figure to you at that time. But right now, it feels to us that our fund balance is likely going to be in the ballpark of about three and a half percent. And we are required to have a three-year plan to expend anything over three percent. So we'll be coming back to the finance committee to discuss ways that we could have a plan around that overage if it is indeed three and a half percent or so. I will say that three, that a half a percentage point is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is easily spent between capital reserve, athletic reserves, and then we have other ideas. We're talking about like fuel stabilization, fund reserve, potential special education reserve. There are many ways to look at this and we'll be doing that. We then looked at this year's expenditures that you just reviewed with me tonight. So we talked about the way that we would have the context for factoring and went through those things. Your report is almost identical to the report we looked at because all we've brought in is school nutrition money, which is not reflected on here. So you saw the same thing we did. And our revenue, it's very early to be collecting revenue, but I will say we are definitely so appreciative of our towns. Our towns are so prompt with payments. Our state subsidy comes equally promptly, so we appreciate that and hope that it continues. And then we talked about the state of our current budget and gave a status on that. We are seeing that we are going to be after watching our budget carefully because we do see some potential pressures that could come as it happens every year. But we've had a couple of hires that we hadn't budgeted for. We will be talking later tonight about the contract for teachers and what might be new from those negotiations. And then we'll also be looking at any shifts in the way revenue comes in or if we have additional expenses that are unforeseen in our budget. So we'll be keeping an eye on each of those things and coming back to the finance committee.
Budget committee doesn't have anything yet, but it sounds like you will sort of.
I mean, we actually need to formally reorganize and elect the chair.
Athletic committee.
We, we had tonight, so next month we'll have those minutes in our packet, but I just wanted to reflect on it while I'm scratching my mind. Fred updated us on the turf because we've all seen, probably, hopefully, we've all seen the turf at this point. It came out really beautiful, so the kids playing on it. That's a great feedback. We've got all the equipment now to maintain. Fred talked about a little bit what he's doing to maintain it. He's, he's got a weekly regiment and then a monthly regiment with a couple of the different pieces of equipment. Hopefully, if we maintain it, we can get more than the ten years that we've targeted, but we didn't really maintain our other one and we've got more than that, so. K D A C field hockey championship will be hosted on our new turf. The Big Eleven football championship game will be hosted here. The M P A has, will be hosting the Class B and C soccer championships. And we discussed, following that, we discussed some of the fees. I believe it was three hundred dollars, like the M P A, for instance, would pay three hundred dollars to rent the facility for the day. The boosters would be able to run the booster shag, we'd give the admissions for the, anybody coming in. They would pay that person taking admissions, the clockkeeper. And especially like that, that M P A soccer game, two of them, that brings in a huge crowd, four different communities coming in to watch that game. So I mean, it does give some, hopefully gives, spread some, the wealth around, so. Fall sports are kind of on the downswing now. We, our new club sport volleyball, thirty, around thirty girls participating in that, so that's, that's really successful. We'll do that again next year and then go forth from there as a varsity sport. Commented on two hundred and seventy to three hundred fall athletes. So that's roughly thirty-five, forty percent, thirty-five, thirty-eight percent of our student body is participating in fall sports. So I mean, that's just sports. If you look at music and extracurricular activities, pretty strong, so. And then we get into our signage campaign, something that we feel is pretty important that we get rolling so that we can fund our next turf. So where we're going from, at this point, we need to get together an ad hoc committee, hopefully somebody with marketing experience. So if anybody, of course, anybody on the board, if they're willing or wish to get on that committee, but if you know somebody that you think would be beneficial to that committee, let Reagan know about it, reach out. Possibility of getting an intern. That, one of the things that we discussed is, this is, this isn't really something that like our athletic director can, can handle on his own. He's already, his weight's gold, so it's gonna be, we need somebody that can, can work with this, so.
Is that a good place for the, Ed Foundation to help?
Yeah.
I'm meeting with Peter Witt tomorrow morning, matter of fact, and Gabe, I can't remember Gabe's last name, so, Nathan, Gabe Nathan.
I don't want to take away from the foundation because they're fantastic, but I think they were in charge of the signage for the building for him and Academy. We didn't get a lot of traction.
No, but they might be able to help by finding someone to help with marketing or intern or something like, not necessarily having them take it over, but just as a resource.
I'll discuss.
And then our fourth topic was admission fees. We talked about how we don't charge for JV games. All varsity games, except for field hockey, we charge admission. We talked about ways, a lot of our games, there's not enough folks that are at the games to warrant, to ticket takers, so there isn't access to this side, although Fred is pushing everybody around, but hopefully it's not a big issue, so. And very last thing we talked about is actually students that are paying a dollar to get in and I think you may have left at that point, but we're thinking maybe, maybe we should forego that dollar, even if we charge the parents an extra dollar so that our students don't have to pay to go watch. Again, we should be pushing our students to go be active as spectators, so.
Great. Building committee, Alan?
We had a meeting and as Regan said, we opened the snowplow removal bids and it was award for a lot of paving. And then we started our walkthroughs last week, went to Port and Newburg campuses and we'll be starting at Reed Brook at eight o'clock tomorrow morning. Anybody that wants to join us, we're doing all for him tomorrow.
Education committee met right before our meeting and we, I think we're going to talk about our update for the proficiency based education under policy.
Okay.
Yep. But just to remind you, there was a change in the law, so we, the law no longer dictates that we have to have a proficiency based diploma for our students. We now can provide a traditional diploma that everyone is familiar with, but we, as a district or the education committee, would like to continue to endorse and embrace the proficiency based education, which is the path that we have been on for several years. It's a path that all of our administrators believe is the right path to be on and philosophically is the right thing to do. That is not the same as a proficiency based diploma. So you're gonna hear two words, proficiency based education and proficiency based diploma, two different things. And then we had an update from Sue O'Brien, who is our educational coach, part-time educational coach, if you remember that discussion. And she is doing some wonderful things in the district and really some high impact activities, being able to impact multiple teachers, which then impact even more students. So that's a fantastic update. That's it. Anything else you want to add, Mary? What is it?
The robots have arrived.
Oh, the robots have arrived. You saw a picture with the McGraw presentation and we will have a presentation of those robots when they're unpackaged and ready to go, which is very exciting because the kids will be coding those robots.
Policy committee, Joe?
Thank you. We met a couple of weeks ago, last month, and we discussed, you know, the second reading for the referral, pre-referral and the trial fine, which we'll obviously be talking about a little bit later. We talked about the policy regarding the public gifts donation and Rick and I agreed that we're gonna start over because it conflicts with state statute.
Oh, that's good.
So we're gonna revise that and then come back with the first reading later. And you know, we talked about the school board policy on school board policies and that will be something that we're gonna discuss further at our next meeting. And then we also, as Amanda was talking about, we looked at the proficiency diploma requirements and that's the first reading. Discussing, obviously, that's up for review for the first reading, which we'll talk about in a couple of minutes.
And we're also gonna bring up the Wally Frazier policy.
Right, and because Wally wasn't able to be present, we did not talk about the superintendent evaluation, but we're gonna be doing that next week.
We're gonna name it the Wally.
So Wally has to be there next week, you know, so he has an opportunity to, you know, finally be involved in it.
The Frazier self, the Frazier evaluation.
Wasn't it that meeting also that, I'm getting confused, you'll have to bear with me, that John brought up the concern about field trip policy?
Yes.
And looking at that and.
Yes, and, yes, we talked about field trip policy. Because you had spoken with, somebody, John had spoken with, no, somebody had spoken with Bangwar about there.
No, it was in the paper.
It was in the paper, yes, yes.
You were getting a copy of what.
And I have it.
What was doing.
Yes, I have it.
So it's something we're gonna be talking about further, later on as well.
Thank you. And the other one, just to remind our policy committee members, we want to bring that resolution that Amanda Potton sent to the Chair of Hucks about six or seven weeks. So that will be on the agenda as well. Thank you.
On the agenda, good. U T C, Alan?
We had a meeting on the fourteenth of September. And there were several things that went over. First, it was to reaffirm the live work policy so that we can qualify for Perkins Grants. For those that don't know what that is, you have to have a policy regarding whether or not faculty, say, to bring in their personal cars, have students work on them, as an example. That's one thing. The live work policy addresses that. The other thing was the cooperative agreement for the U T C. We didn't reaffirm it, but we discussed it, because I believe it's still in discussions with the superintendent.
We're meeting tomorrow morning as well, the advisory.
Because that has to be in place to also qualify for Perkins Grants money. And then a lot of the discussion still revolves around the C T E funding and how that came to be and why U T C didn't get the funds it expected to get. And it turns out after discussions with the state, there are twenty-seven U T, twenty-seven technology centers, I believe, in the state, some of the U T C, I think, and the state decided that it was, when it took over the funding, that it would keep all of those centers whole, that none of them would receive any less funding than they were already getting. And so of course, the U T C, the state average funding for students around is over seven thousand dollars and the U T C does it for forty-eight hundred. So they took the money that should be coming to the U T C and gave it to other centers that cost more. And some of them are conservative, you know, much more. But the interesting thing, the budget was fixed, I believe, in June or whenever, all the budget meetings that over with, their budget was fixed. And in July, the state actually came out with the EPS funding and gave them about two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars more than they were budgeting for. So basically, they can't spend it from next year. Just like we were in that.
Yeah, I know, that's.
But it's important to understand, because we send our students there, funding is something we have to keep an eye on and try to push to get more funding from U T C, because they certainly deserve it.
Thanks. Behavioral review, no?
No meeting.
Education Foundation, no? We're meeting with Peter.
Peter, tomorrow morning, yes.
First board?
We have not met. Or they didn't.
Wellness committee and community relations?
Regan is actually gonna present on.
Do you have it?
I have it. Okay, yeah. You were there.
I was there eventually.
Okay.
Would somebody like to report?
Regan and I will report together. We're just waiting to that. The community relations committee met and we've discussed three primary things. One was the app that we had gained quite a bit of traction on. We saw some demos with various apps that we were looking at, originally we were looking at for fall of eighteen, but now we're looking at perhaps the possibility of an app for fall of nineteen, so that will be brought to the budget discussions when you have those first discussions. There were really three categories I'm looking at Nate, because he's gonna have to tell me. There are three kind of functions that these apps have potential to provide. One would be a notification system. One would be just an app with information and one also hosts the websites, right?
Correct.
And so Nate has done a really nice job kind of looking at the pluses and minuses and really looking at the bottom line, about what we're current, what we currently have in existence for our notification systems and our website hosting and what functions that bring and what the cost is associated with that. And if we switch to one of these other companies, if we would actually save money and have more functionality. So I don't remember what we left it with that, that we're just gonna bring that to discussion with budget.
Budget.
Yep, that's how we left it. It's gonna be a great discussion.
Great.
We also talked about the need, and we've heard this a few times tonight, the need to be able to get out to the community, changes to the proficiency based diploma or lack thereof now. And I think I had originally brought this up with a hope to be able to have these discussions very early on, thinking that our policy would take months to get through, but we are making such progress in our policy and the decision around the diploma that I think we can wait until that's kind of finalized and then the community relations committee can help us make sure that the message is clear and available to the public around what we're doing with our diploma. Accurate to say? Yes. And then, oh, we talked about communication for budget season and how can we start that communication earlier and make sure that we have voices heard and we're taking into consideration what the public would like and what makes the most sense and what's the best way to get those communications started. So it was really a lot of brainstorming. That's it.
Great.
Regan, do you want to add anything?
All right, good, thank you. Okay, great. Joe, for policy, I'll let you take the lead on this.
All right, so first policy, this is for a second reading, is I H P A A. There's no changes from what we talked about last month. So now we can move that. So now we can move that we adopt for second reading, policy IHBAA, as suggested in the packet.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Similar with the child fund, which is policy IHBAC, that's also first, second reading, and we did not make any changes beyond what was already contemplated, that there were no changes from the first reading. So for, I would make a motion that we adopt for the second reading, IHBAC is noted in the packet.
Second reading and adoption?
Yes.
And we have a motion, Joe made the motion, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, so the graduation requirements, IKF, that's the, what we were talking about earlier for the proficiency-based diploma or rid of the proficiency-based diploma. And what you'll see here is that there's actually two different versions. The first version, I'll talk, I'll talk about what the difference is in just a moment, but basically, the major changes that we have here, as you can see blocked out, is just kind of getting rid of that paragraph regarding priority standards, because that's obviously talking about things changing. And what the proposal is, which the education committee has recommended, is that we move away from the proficiency-based diploma requirement and just have our regular diploma, keep what we have right now, basically, keep things the way that they are right now in terms of, you know, the graduation requirements, as opposed to what they will be currently in a couple of years. And we, and Bill particularly was the one who's kind of promoting this, but as you can see, on, under credit requirements, we did note that the courses themselves have priority standards. And Bill, why was that important to you? I know, just you can explain it better.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. We just talked about, you know, the core, the teachers look through their content and look through their classes, that these are the ones we decided to be the core pieces for this course, for the understandings that you absolutely must have to pass through this course, even though they don't necessarily, they would be called graduation standards. Now, we want a student who, any student who comes through HA to be able to get those core pieces, even if it's not all of the standards they come across in the class, we want our courses to be built on standards, but we know that if we have to drop down for any reason, that we can modify and better use so that students can access and move through that curriculum in maybe a little bit of a different way than they have in the past, or if they run into challenges in other areas of it, then maybe we just focus on those areas. So it just gives us better flexibility to continue to have that conversation around, here are the key understandings for the course, maybe not all of them, but here are the key ones.
Thank you. So those changes that you see in the first one that we just talked about, those are the changes that came out of the policy meeting. After the policy meeting, I emailed with Mary Girard and Bill, and they had asked that we look at changing the language regarding science, since it was something that we're looking at, and I thought since we're gonna be talking about it and this is a first reading, that we would just put out a second proposal, so that, you know, the board is obviously can look at it as a whole. And Bill, I think you said that the science language is required by the state, can you explain that a little bit further, or maybe it'd be Mary better?
The piece that is required in state statute is science, including at least one year of laboratory study. In our graduation requirements, we say two credits, science nine and biology. I would like to change that. I would like to make science nine not a requirement. I mean, it is a way to meet one of the two science requirements. I would like to have the language actually, we have, we require two credits in science. I would actually like it to read what the state's read, science, including at least one year of laboratory study. To me, that better fits the need, what I'm looking for is, I don't like the box, I don't like the box of a science nine class over, let's say, a student struggles in science nine, doesn't get that credit, but goes on and does really well in biology, then goes on and does really well in chemistry and physics, but never, never got that science nine, so that might hold them back from graduating. And to me, that doesn't make sense, and we've talked about it in the science department, revamping our science nine curriculum anyway, maybe adding some robotics, excuse me, robotics or coding stuff to it. So I think removing the science nine as a, as a required graduation course just makes sense to us and keep it at that state language.
Mary Ann?
How long has it been? Two years of science? Has that been forever or was, and do any schools require more?
There are some schools that require three years of science, in, in my experience, but all of them, any, any school I've ever been a part of, it's usually biology or the lab science that is absolutely required. They don't acquire any other one specific one. So the state doesn't require biology, obviously, it's one that we want to push because biology is such a great core beginning for, for our students, but we're also seeing that students are potentially coming to us in the high school level, ready to jump into bio, and not necessarily needing to get into that science nine. So I think, again, just asking for that flexibility. I would love to say, yes, let's make it three electives in sci, or three student science credits, but I don't think, I think that's more of a substantial change than we're looking at right now. I just want the flexibility for our students moving through to not have to absolutely pass that science nine class, so it's scripted.
Joe, do you want to add something or motion?
Well, I would move that we adopt for our first reading, the second version, the one with the two years of science, including at least one year of laboratory study. Second, then.
Great, any discussion?
Can we get feedback from our students real quick, just to see how they, how they would feel about not having science nine as a required course?
Yeah, absolutely. I only remember science nine very vaguely. I think it was more based on earth science, it is kind of layers of the earth and things like that. Well, it definitely was a good introduction to kind of a science atmosphere, no pun intended for classroom. I think it was valuable for me at the time, but at the same time, I could also see how students would be prepared to jump into biology immediately, since there weren't really any building blocks and science nine meant to prepare us for those next biology and chemistry. Like I said, it was more earth science. So in terms of requirements, I can see how it would be definitely beneficial to move that to the required to graduate.
How about you, Sarah?
I think the middle school, I speak for Reedsburg here, does a really great job of preparing students with the curriculum that is in science nine. And I said prepare, but I really mean cover, like, most of the information that goes on in science nine. So like Lucas said, like Mr. Tracy said, a lot of students are definitely ready to jump into biology if they're inclined in the STEM parts of school, and I think that, I definitely think that it shouldn't be a requirement to take science nine, especially since they've been teaching this, very similar topics all throughout Sixth and Seventh Grade.
Thank you. We have, any other questions? We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Any opposed? Mary, any abstaining? Okay. Mary Anne's abstaining. Okay, board self-evaluation, I'm gonna hand this over to Amanda.
Um, sorry, I just woke this up. Thank you all for participating in the board self-evaluation. We had a very good participation rate. I apologize, I sent out all of the results on Friday after the packet went out Tuesday the first time. We met as the ad hoc committee and really, I want to tease out some trends, because I think we could talk about this all night long, but we don't have the time to talk about it. So I think it's important that we look at the trends, the first one being that we got a lot of feedback and all were in agreement, that the current evaluation tool is not up to where the standard that we would want it to be, and was not the useful tool that we think it should be. All remain in agreement that it's very important to do an annual evaluation, but we would like to take a look at the tool and make some changes. That being said, we wanted to be compliant with our policy and make sure that we got this year's evaluation complete, so that was our focus for the meeting, and we agreed that the ad hoc committee would remain intact for a period of time in order to redo the evaluation tool going forward. But it, we had what we had this year. So if you look at the graph, the tables that we sent out, we can see some trends in areas that the percentage of board members who agreed that we met criteria or were performing at the standard that we should be in certain areas, has increased in some areas, which I think is fantastic, and decreased in others, and I think that's where we should really draw our attention to at this time, given the time that we have. And I did send out a Word document that does summarize some of those trends, and I'm not going to read it out loud to you, but I'm gonna find it so I can use it as a cheat sheet. And ad hoc committee members, please step in if you'd like to say anything. One of the, the highest score that we got was under our fiscal management of the district, which I think is really a great thing. The biggest area of improvement that we saw was under our staff relations. So from the board member's perspective, the place that we've seen the most amount of growth, or what we would consider we've seen the most amount of growth, is with our staff relations. So I thought that was, and that was something that we very purposely, out of our last evaluation of ourselves, pulled out and have put a lot of effort and work into. So it also shows you that these evaluations are really helpful. We have taken the information from previous evaluations, put initiatives in place in order to address the needs and actually make progress toward them. Do you have any comments on that?
I, I just want to say a large part of that is due to our admin team and particularly those building admins, so thank you so much for helping to strengthen those relationships with staff.
The other, another thing that we had significant area of growth in was the community relations and school relations, as well as the, it looks like we think we're doing better in fiscal management, which was our highest score, so that's great. The areas of concern, the places where we feel like we are not doing as well or that we've actually, we see ourselves as decreasing in, the biggest area of concern was under policy, so we feel like we're not doing as well with our policy, and the other area of concern was board development.
The policy thing has nothing to do with the policy committee. It's more, it's just how we as a board are managing, our understanding and our compliance with policy, I think.
Well, I would argue that we don't actually know that well, because the way the tool is written, it's hard to, there's a lot of confusion, the way the current tool is written, it's hard to really decipher what's being asked, and there's about twenty different questions under each category and you're asked to score one. So I think it's hard to say what about policy people are feeling like we aren't doing as well, when in, the members of the ad hoc committee had a lot of opinions about areas of improvement, and one of the things to really, that we spent some time on is, there's over five hundred policies in this district. We as a board are expected to follow all five hundred policies, as we should, however, this is a board of volunteers, very busy volunteers, and so there is, there was a lot of talk about creating realistic expectations for this board, and additionally, and I want to make the point that we've had a really hard time with board, with recruiting people to the board. We didn't even have enough people running in Hampden this year. So there is a balance between making sure that we have realistic expectations so that we can remain having a really strong board and being able to recruit people to be, to serve on them.
I agree completely. I, I think there are ways that we can manage the whole policy issue in question without putting undue stress on anybody, certainly not on the policy committee that has two or three people on it. So I would like to, I think, make a motion to ask the ad hoc committee to look at the policy and based on some of the feedback, come up with some changes to the actual board evaluation policy. And bring that to the policy committee then after there's some work with that.
Does that need a motion?
I don't think so. That would be part of the ad hoc conversation.
That we're already looking at that policy.
We can look at that policy and then we can bring it to the policy committee.
Just like when Wally was in that ad hoc, did the superintendent self-evaluation, it led to policy.
Great, great. The other topic that we spent quite a bit of time on is board development, and over the past several years, we've had a very high turnover on the board, almost every...
Heath's the longest-serving, can you?
Heath was here first. And for many years, I know, when I first joined the board five years ago, I was definitely the new kid on the block and people had been here for a long time. And so board development and orientation was not a major topic of concern because people were so well-established on this board. That is, it's a different conversation now. We have a lot of new board members and fresh ideas and fresh blood, which is fantastic, but at the same time, we've lost some of that institutional knowledge with the board, and we haven't done as well, in my opinion, as well as we could with orienting new members. I think about when Tim Pease came to speak at my second board meeting ever, just about what does it mean to be on a school board, and we, I think a lot of new board members have missed that presentation, I think, really, to really look at what does orientation for new board members look like, and I would be happy for that ad hoc committee to also have a discussion around that, at least get that discussion started. That's all I can say.
Can I bring up one other thing, and I don't know whether this is appropriate or not, so, Ms. Chairman, please slap my hand. Indeed, I am inappropriate, but I really would like to, I do, I personally have a great deal of difficulty asking our administrative team to do more than they're already doing, but I see great value in having our administrative team also evaluate the school board. But I would really like just a sense of whether that would be something that would just add to the burden of what you're already doing, giving you one more task to do. That would be my concern in making that request. Anybody have any...
You're asking for our opinion? I think us to evaluate the board, I think there are a lot of things we're not involved in, if the board's involved with it at, at the district level, I would not feel comfortable.
The board's here, state legislators anyway, and so how well-versed are we with, you know, any laws or any bills that would affect this district? And one thing Mary and I, Mary and I discussed is a possibly have a watchdog subcommittee that would keep an eye on the bills and laws and whatever, and see what we can do and kind of bring it to the board's attention, hey, this, this is, this is on the slate and this needs to be discussed, and we need to know what this is gonna mean to us.
The MSMA sent those last with all the proposed legislation that impacts us, so maybe we could think about different ways to maybe add that highlight in the agenda or add it to our packet or something like that, because that is our watchdog in terms of...
Rick, or we can, we'll see if we don't get them already.
We do, but I think maybe...
But we don't discuss them.
Maybe, yeah, maybe drilling it down and discussing it at a board level, yeah.
Now, is that sent to all of us on the board?
Yes.
You should be getting it.
Yeah.
MSMA sends it out automatically.
Not gonna get Jim let us know, and we'll add it to the distribution.
I'll double-check with Glory, make sure we...
Aside from Amanda, this, this committee was made of a bunch of rookies here too, so we're still learning.
Goes back to the orientation. He might not have been added to the list, so we'll check.
Did he just have the meeting?
Uh, no, not yet. Scott?
Well, I wanted to point out that Mary Girard has done a really good job, in particular around the proficiency-based diplomas, keeping our attention on that. For me, I, I gave it a relatively low score, and it was, it was because we have had legislators in to have discussions with them, but I think that that's the kind of thing where a more continuous touching base could be really helpful.
You guys from Winterport, I'll have you vote for Scott, he could be our liaison.
That's right.
I don't remember if I put it in my comments or not on my evaluation, but maybe looking at using prep as a way to sort of regionalize orientations for new school board members, and sort of do like a regional orientation training, and then finally it takes some time to do more of a local orientation as well. I think when I joined the board...
Did it?
We immediately had a prep meeting. I think before I was elected, email told me, put this in your calendar, you need to go to this. And that was very beneficial.
Matter of fact, I emailed Tim Pease this morning to see, because Tim has had a great report back from board members over the last three to five years, and so hopefully we can get him here in the next couple of months. I think following up on Jim's point, put that on every other month's agenda, here's a legislative conversation, we have David Hagan, we may have Scott Cuddin, so, I mean, we have some opportunities here. And you already heard from me tonight on the CDS theme, for example, we need to pay attention to that. We don't know what the school funding fund is gonna look like, we need to pay... We don't know what the school funding form is going to look like. We need to pay attention to that.
We really should try to get some folks on the education committee, though, because we've had them in the past, you know, and they're, not folks from the education, you get just our representatives here and there. They're a little wishy-washy about, about things, not any of their fault, but that's just not their area of expertise, so.
Hard to get anyone pinned down a month or two before the election.
Yes, we better wait a couple months.
And Senate President Toto made a good point that had, had he been aware of what we were going to talk about beforehand, he could discuss it with the chair of the relevant committee and come in with some good information, but... So it's, it's a learning curve for us, too, in terms of communicating with the legislators.
So I have a question. In terms of the Main School Management Association.
Right.
The process, of course, is the bills come in, they get a title.
Yes.
And then slowly, very slowly, they're scheduled for committee hearings, that sort of thing. Are they, are they sending out information early enough to allow board discussion and for response?
I'd say yes. MSMA and Main School Management Association and Main School Superintendent Association and Main School Boards Association all had legislative reps to attend all the legislative hearings. And they push that information out to us, and it gets back to what Jim was bringing up. Where we have that mailing, we can sit down and we can prioritize, what do we need to talk about tonight? What do we need to talk about next month, and then get back to our local reps to help us on that. They have a well-designed process. There's a lot of work to it. I think last year they had, what did our rep say, something like 500-some-odd bills, and they were discussing some enormous number before then.
Great, good discussion. So it sounds like you have, are you, have anything else, or is it not...
I do not know the other committee members of anything else.
Sounds like you have your work cut out for you. So thank you for your volunteerism. Okay, I'm going to ask that we actually go into executive session, right? Are we doing that now, or did you want...
We have, I'd like to have 12 A first, then executive session preceding.
Oh, you want 12 A first? Okay, we'll go for it.
So 12 As to discuss the nec, administrative contract, and we've discussed this extensively. Hopefully, my agenda notes are self-sufficiently defined. My request to ask you to give me permission to modify the contract of our director of curriculum.
So moved.
For complete public transparency, so no one, so no one is questioning what this means. And I've talked to Mary, so she's not greatly alarmed by this. Mary is intending to retire and remain with the school district as our, as our director of curriculum. She has to meet the provisions of the law, which basically are, as we know, just to summarize, the three points. The salary is reduced by 25 percent, there has to be 30 days of bona fide separation, and Mary cannot remain in a, what we call a PERS, Public Employee Retirement System position, more than five years. So I would ask your endorsement of that concept.
Means that there's no contribution by the school district towards retirement, so additional savings.
That's correct.
Right, the total savings.
And the health insurance is reducing it as well. The total savings is approximately, this year, $50,000.
So moved. Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
So is there a motion to go into executive session?
To retirement.
Senate boarder, if we go into executive session and extend past the time, don't we need to extend the time before we go into executive session?
No, we can come out of executive session and extend, but I don't believe we will have that problem. I'm being optimistic. So did we have a full motion?
Motion to enter executive session according to one on MRSA's section four of the policy to discuss negotiations on our director's EAU 22.
Great.
Second.
Oh, yes.
EAU 22.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Did we formally come out of the executive session?
We did.
You don't have to worry about it.
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Fantastic. Great work. Thank you.
Sedina, you might, you might want to, if you think it's appropriate, inform the board what your next steps are with the membership. So they might be...
It caught me speaking when I was sharing about...
Right, while, while you're finishing, Snack, I, I want to say that Sedina made the public point about thanking the negotiating committee. I would echo that back to EAU 22. They, they had a large group of people, and they were across the board, professional and respectful and civil, and negotiated their side hard, and held to many of their points, but it was overall 16 or 17 darn good session.
I think that was right national, which is right around the corner. So actually, our next sessions are, I'm going to stand up because I'm about ready to die sitting down. Tomorrow, we are having a membership meeting in Winterport at a time that will allow all the Winterport folks, all the Winterport members to show up there. And we are also doing one, 2:30 at Reedsburg on Friday, and then 3:30 at Smith on Friday.
McGraw.
McGraw, sorry. I get those all mixed up. So that will cover, those are the three meetings we're planning on having, where we'll introduce the changes, explain it to our members, and then we will put out for the official vote, and hopefully, no, early next week.
The vote early next week, Sedina?
Yep, because we knew that you guys were talking about it tonight, so we set, we did not want to meet with the membership until the board had ratified it, because we thought that would be very bad for relations if we met and ratified, and then y'all said no. It's like, okay, that's going to be a setup for disaster, when we've all worked so hard to bring things back together, so.
Excellent, thank you.
Great. Due to the holiday on Monday, we are going to be giving our building representative ballots, and then giving them until the end of their school days on Wednesday to have members vote. So by the evening of the 10th, we should be able to let...
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you all very much.
Do we have time to do that?
Time to roll eggs, we're all ready.
Go for it. We're going to talk about the overnight field trip.
Yeah, per board policy, overnight field trips must require your ratification, so I'm bringing one to you this time. The other reason I'm not bringing the others, I want to look at the financial note with them. That's why I'm not bringing them. But this one has no finances. It's for the job training grant program here at Hampton Academy. So to comply with board policy necessitating board approval, I ask you to endorse the overnight field trip.
So moved. Second.
Great. Any discussion? All those in favor? Fantastic program. All right, do we have any meetings that we need to set? We have five minutes to set any meeting dates that need to be set.
I think community relations needs to set a meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Policy's gone on the computer, but it's on the paper copy, so we're meeting next Wednesday.
The 10th.
Thank you.
So the 10th is the policy committee, community relations. Scott, do you want to throw out a date now?
Uh, yes.
While he's looking, Alan, I think we need a board and we need a budget. I mean, a building...
Thank you, guys.
Did budget come in? Budget committee last year was Heath, Rob, and Jane.
Great.
Jim.
Assume those same three members, plus maybe a number of...
What time? Days are five. It's that block between three and seven that's tough for me for the next two and a half weeks because of...
Okay, so let's go out to the 24th? Because I, I am not going to be able to meet anytime except like 4:30 or 5:30.
24th.
23rd.
Yeah, 23rd or 24th. Yeah. Let me, hang on a second. Let me just check something real quick.
And while we'd like all committee members to attend, if it's majority of committee members that are content, it's still worth meeting. I know our schedules are very hard to coordinate.
It's just this time of year. Let's see, nope, not there.
So are we assuming at this point...
23rd or 24th, you have the same?
Or I can do 20?
No, no.
Actually, 22nd as well.
Election in November, that's what we'll be pointing to.
22nd?
Yeah.
So Regan would like to meet with the current, the current board members on budget, and then knowing it might change after the election.
Yes, correct. That's correct.
For Hampden, there's four seats, and there's three people in one ride, and so...
We're probably good.
Three people are already here, right?
Three people already here, and there's one...
All right, so we've got four minutes to set some meeting dates, so who's setting some meeting dates?
Community relations is working on 22nd, 23rd, 24th.
22nd or 23rd?
22nd, 23rd, I'm thinking 5 o'clock.
I don't suppose you would consider the 26th as a Friday?
Nope.
You can meet the 23rd or 26th.
Yeah, that's, that's the last week. It's, it looks like I'm going to be needed, although it's not definite.
Let's, maybe we can do 23rd, and if you can make it, and you can make it.
Yeah, let's do that.
You say 23rd is good?
Yeah, what, what time?
Yes, he's now vying for the 23rd as well for budget.
You said 5 o'clock?
You could stack them up.
Budget committees, what?
Yeah, it's, it's, putting that is tentative, though.
All right, we'll do 4 o'clock budget, 5 o'clock community relations on the 23rd.
Sold.
We will have them for a month. Building committees.
Budget community relations on the 23rd.
What time's the budget meet?
4 o'clock on the 23rd, 5 o'clock community relations on 23rd.
Of October?
Yes.
Ad hoc. I know. Ad hoc at 6, that day?
20 years.
No.
I'm out of town.
Jane, if that doesn't work, let, let me know.
So the ad hoc committee, the evaluation, what's that?
Wednesday, 6.
The 20th week.
23rd.
I know that week's hard for Jim.
But that, that'll be key on that week, it should anyway.
So we have three meetings on the 23rd, 4 o'clock budget, 5 o'clock community relations, 6 o'clock ad hoc committee on the board self-evaluation.
They couldn't do that, they couldn't do the 6 o'clock.
All right.
Yeah, we did three last time.
I love building committee, Alan. What are you thinking? And Tony, are you interested in us?
We've got two minutes, folks, two minutes.
Pulling one together on a day you can do, or are you good with enough data?
I'm good with an update.
Jess, Mary Ann, 16.
I barely made the athletic tonight.
5 o'clock, Jim, 5 o'clock, 16.
5 o'clock and the 16?
Ad hoc on the 16th.
No, that's, that's...
For the next few weeks, all you can do is that 9 to 2.
Yeah, that pretty much, well, what time? Yeah, that 9 to 2 spot is, is good for me. Yeah, I know, I know. Got it, up until the 25th, 26th, that, that three to seven block stuff.
Because we're going to have to have multiple meetings, like, this is just the first, do you mind if we kick it off on the 16th?
You do what you have to do without me.
Jess and Mary Ann.
And you'll catch up before 7:00.
Yeah, I will.
16 and 5 o'clock.
I got it.
Yes.
The other committee all set?
We're, we're getting there, yes. Well, we've got...
You get it? All right. With one minute to spare, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? To adjourn, okay. Good evening.